And I just started the recording and I have nine thirty Savannah. Madam Moderator, you want to get us started?
I can do that. Well, welcome everyone. As Jonathan mentioned, this town hall will be recorded this year. So if you haven't already done so, please accept the just say got it with the record and Brad will Brad Rains with TV PPA will be taking the reins and introducing everybody and the town hall.
Yes, thank you Savannah. Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Brad Rains. I work for Tennessee Valley Public Power Association in Chattanooga. And a member of the Drive Electric Tennessee team and happy to get us kicked off to the second annual Drive Electric Tennessee Town Hall. So thank you all for your attendance. I want to take this opportunity to introduce to you the executive committee members of Drive Electric Tennessee. First of all, the purpose of the D E T Executive Committee, as you see there is to provide planning, fiscal and operational guidance to support a wide range of effective and efficient efforts across the initiative. Certainly very excited to be on this team as you can see, and let me go ahead and introduce these teammates to you. And my apologies if I butcher your name, but first of all, we got Drew Frye, manager of electric vehicles with Tennessee Valley Authority. We've got Alexa Voitek. She is the Deputy Director of Tennessee of T DEX Office of Energy Programs. Next, you see Jonathan Overly, the Executive Director and Coordinator of East Tennessee Clean Fuels Coalition. Daniel Sixay, who is Chief of Staff and Co-Coordinator of the East Tennessee Clean Fuels Coalition. I have already introduced myself to the group. So once again, you see me there. Finally, our next, we have Savannah Robertson. She's the Drive Electric Tennessee Coordinator and with East Tennessee Clean Fuels Coalition. Molly Crips is a member of the Executive Committee. She is the Director of T DEX Office of Energy Programs. Ryan Stanton, who is Senior Program Manager of E V Evolution at T V A. And finally, Mark Finley, who is Energy Analyst with T DEX Office of Energy and Programs. You notice a QR code on that screen. I encourage any of you, if you'd like to get more info about this committee and what we do, and a link to the webpage under Drive Electric Tennessee for the Executive Committee, by all means, use that QR code. Next Savannah. Let's talk about working groups. There's three working groups under Drive Electric Tennessee, and I'll introduce you to the people leading those working groups and what those groups are doing. And again, you notice the QR code on the top right corner of the screen. Again, you can link and find more information about all these groups. As I'm talking, if you're interested, we and please know that we're always looking for more people to join us on these working groups. Participation from others around the valley is crucial and key to our efforts. So if you're interested in what any of these groups are doing, by all means, you can find more info following that link on the QR code. First group we have is our infrastructure group led by Drew Frye at T V A and Ken Minow at the Sierra Club. That group works on developing effective and efficient E V infrastructure across the state of Tennessee through coordination and planning, through build out and through developing standards and station maintenance efforts. So good group to get involved with if you are on the charger side of the business, no doubt. Secondly, we got the awareness working group led by Daniel and myself. We are focused on increasing E V awareness in Tennessee through E V ride and drive promotion, through fleet education, and through E V consumer education. The third working group are Policies and Programs Group, co-chared by Alexa Voitek and by Laurel Creach, City of Nashville Sustainability Leader. That group is focused on developing easy oriented policies and programs through state government regulations, through standardized local policies, corporate policies, coordinated utility programs, and both car and charging station incentives. So three great groups, encourage anyone that's interested in joining any of those efforts and let us know by any means. Thank you. All right, next, I think it's my turn to turn it over to probably the most important person in Drive Electric Tennessee, the Coordinator of this effort, Savannah Robertson. She keeps us all going in the right direction and she will take over now to cover the agenda.
Thank you, Brad. And thank you, everyone, for attending this year's town hall. Happy to be here and let you you all know a little bit about Tennessee, Drive Electric Tennessee, and what we've been up to this last year. And just to give everyone a brief overview of what we're covering today. So Brad gave an introduction to our working groups and myself. And then we are going to transition into the past, present, and future of the E T. So giving you a little bit of an overview of the program. And then next, after that, Alexa Voitek will be giving us some insight on the electric vehicle adoption trends in Tennessee. Then Jonathan Overly will be going over members and memberships. Then we'll transition into updates from each of our working groups. And then at ten oh five, we will be talking about the Tennessee E V Specialty License Plate, and we'll have some exciting updates with that. At ten oh eight, Ainsley Kelso will be talking about our Certified E V Dealership Training Program and where that is heading in the next year. At ten thirteen, Jack Goodwin, our Chapter Development Advisor, will be talking about how we've been developing the chapters across the state over the last year. At ten eighteen, we will be looking at the Electrify America Promotion Campaign with Ainsley Kelso. And then at ten twenty four, I will be going over some exciting events that we have going on. And then at ten thirty, we will have a ten minute session for Q and A. So if you have any questions between now and then, please post your questions to the chat. We do have members of our East Tennessee Clean Fuels Team that are moderating the chat, so we'll be able to capture those for you and make sure that your questions are being answered. And then at ten forty, we have will be providing you updates from the local power companies, fleets, and projects. So you'll be able to hear a little bit about those. And then there will be a ten minute Q and A session for those projects, fleets, and the L P C incentives. So again, if you have any questions, please post them in the chat. And then any kind of closing remarks that Jonathan may have, those will be covered at ten twenty seven, and we'll open that up for discussion. And then with that. So just to give you a little bit about what Drive Electric Tennessee is, it's a core team of stakeholders, including state agencies, electric utilities, cities, universities, electric vehicle manufacturers, businesses, advocacy groups, working together towards Drive Electric Tennessee's mission of two hundred thousand electric vehicles on the Tennessee roads by twenty twenty eight. So it's a pretty lofty goal. And then again, Alexa here in a couple of minutes is going to give you an update on where we stand with that goal and how many electric vehicles we have exactly on the road. D E T's stakeholders have identified goals and guiding principles for increasing electric vehicle adoption over the next five to 10 years. And those goals are listed below. So we have economic development, social benefits, cost effectiveness, and technology innovation. So those four are kind of the guiding principles or goals that we have that are lead that kind of lead our working groups really. And with economic development. So the whole purpose of that goal is to help promote local and regional economic development. And then also still being attentive to the local customers' preferences and needs. So keeping those in mind. Being mindful of the supply chain and other resource constraints. So that might have an effect on how we can reach our mission. So just staying on top of that, social benefits include social equity considerations to benefit all Tennesseeans. So looking at all components of our community and what makes up Tennessee and how we can help all aspects of our community to adopt electric vehicles. And then also to reduce environmental impacts such as air quality issues that we have with emissions related to ICE vehicles. Also, one of the goals that we have within the program is driving cost effectiveness. So making electric vehicles within reach again for all aspects of our our community in Tennessee. Technology innovation, we want to foster entrepreneurialship and technical innovation in the transportation sector as well as prepare for a more connected autonomous transportation sector. So a lot of lofty goals, but with the help of our working groups, we are able to achieve those or work towards them. Also, something to be on the lookout for, we are in the process with our Executive Committee to be adopting a D E T Constitution. So this is a working document that will provide guidance and kind of help roadmap us out to, again, stay in line with our mission and achieve that two hundred thousand electric vehicles on the roads by twenty twenty eight. Hey Savannah, that's time, by the way. Okay, um, well, I feel like I could spend every all day, every day talking about D E T, but again, we will be sharing the slides with you all. So you can see on this slide, just kind of past, present, and future of our program. So stay tuned. And with that, I will transition the baton onto Alexa Voitek, so she can talk about electric vehicle adoption.
Awesome. Thanks Savannah. Hi, everyone. This is Alexa Voitek with the T DEX Office of Energy Programs. So just quickly touching on the electric vehicle population within the state. So we work directly with the Department of Revenue on a quarterly basis to pull active E V registrations that are current. And this is a little different than other looks that 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 folks can have access to in terms of sales data, cumulative sales data in the state. We like to see the active registrations just because if a vehicle was sold in Tennessee, it doesn't necessarily mean that it stayed in Tennessee. So we like to see those current active registrations for both plug-in hybrid electric vehicles as well as battery, full battery electric vehicles. I was hoping to be able to have the numbers through June thirtieth for today's call. I did get that that data set from the Department of Revenue, but we're still running it through the VIN decoder right now. And so unfortunately, I don't have that total figure for today. But within the next, you know, coming days, we should be able to have that information posted on the Atlas Public Policy E V Dashboard, which on on the screen that you see right now, you can see a a screen grab of that. So for anyone who hasn't visited the Atlas Public Policy E V Hub, it's a great resource online, but this is where we publish the updated stats on E V registration in the state once we get them. And so as you can see here, you can kind of click through the map and see by county the number of vehicles that by model you can even see. But as of March thirty first, we had almost eighteen thousand five hundred electric vehicles registered in the state. So we are seeing consistent growth quarter over quarter. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet that goal of two hundred thousand electric vehicles within the state by twenty twenty eight. That's all.
Thank you, Alexa. So next, we'll transition over to Jonathan Overly, Director of East Tennessee Clean Fuels, and he'll talk about members and membership for D E T.
Well, good morning, everybody. And just a quick follow up, we also post the Drive Electric Tennessee on the Drive Electric Tennessee website, the numbers for E Vs. We we get that from the state and through the Atlas E V Hub, but we put those on the Drive Electric Tennessee website as well. And there's note in chat. We very much appreciate all our members. Members and and joining Drive Electric Tennessee basically helps you better integrate into conversations, working groups, and just opportunities to do things together in Tennessee. And if you go to the Drive Electric Tennessee website, you will be able to find membership pretty easily under Get Involved. And there's individual memberships as well as business memberships. But just want to highlight a few people that are in this list. You'll see folks like T V A in seven states, Brad Rains worked with seven states. You'll see a lot of local power companies, depending on what state you're from there. I know there's there seems to be like ten different three-letter acronyms for your local power company that might be municipal or cooperative. Paris B P U, Holston Electric, Nashville Electric Service, K U B, M L G W. You'll see quite a few in there. We really appreciate them. They're very important partners in terms of working in localities in Tennessee on incentives, E V S E, D C Fast Charge, as well as local Level Two opportunities. So really appreciate the opportunity to grow and get to know more L P Cs in Tennessee and work with them. You'll see Central State's Bus Sales and Mid-South Bus Center on here. They are representatives for O E Ms for school buses. And as everybody probably knows, EPA funding has gotten started. So they've been great partners in working on reaching to school districts in the state and trying to educate them about that funding opportunity. It is almost a once in a lifetime opportunity, the way they're running that funding. So really appreciate both of them as members and being able to work with them. Just a couple other examples, A B M on the left, you'll see is a leading installer of electric vehicle charging ports nationally. And if you've never heard of A B M, you will be shocked if you look them up. They are an international company that is huge. And they do all kinds of facilities and transportation services management. But they have a lot of properties. So they're going to be, we're looking forward to working with them about opportunities for charging in Tennessee. Right underneath A B M on the left is Orange E V. If you've not heard of Orange E V, they were one of the first people to come to market with what is really a first great example of how to use an E V in a heavy duty application, and that's at a tractor terminal. So they you oftentimes have class eight trucks that really just move materials around that terminal. And so they stay in a fairly small area. Oftentimes, there's one, two, three busy periods during the day, and then there's kind of a lull in between. So it's charging opportunity for the vehicles. But look up Orange E V. They're they're interesting vehicles and a great opportunity for a way to get larger E Vs in use in a community. And then I'm going to point out City Auto on here. So City Auto is in Memphis, and you'll see a couple of dealerships in here. And you'll hear a little bit more from Ainsley Kelso and a little bit about our Tennessee Certified E V Dealership Program. But they are working toward becoming a Certified E V Dealer in Tennessee. So wide variety of people that become a member. You can get involved in working groups to communicate directly with us and other members of of D E T, get involved in projects that people are trying to work on. But a lot of it starts with the introductions. The more we know about your company, the easier it is to to kind of find how we can work with you guys for reaching the goal that we have in Tennessee of two hundred thousand E Vs on our roads before twenty twenty eight. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Savannah.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, yeah, just a special thank you to all of our members. I mean, we wouldn't be where we are today if it weren't without them. And so next, you'll will hear from our co-chairs of our working groups. So again, these working groups are helping us to drive towards work towards our mission of two hundred thousand E Vs on the road by twenty twenty eight. And again, that that had the work that we've been able to do in the state of Tennessee would not be without our working groups and the work that they're doing. They since the start of D E T, we've already been able to release several guides and resources to the public that are helping communities to adopt electric vehicles within within their their space. And on this slide here, you can see there is a QR code. So if you would like to learn more about our working groups and to see the participants that that work in these working groups, you can scan the QR code and please feel free, if you would like to join a working group, reach out to me. I will put my email in the chat. So you can email me if you'd like to join one of the working groups. And with that, I will transition over to Drew Frye and Kent Minow to talk about some updates within the Infrastructure Working Group.
Hi, everyone. This is Drew Frye. I'm going to lead us off here and just kind of give you an update on what's been going on in the infrastructure working group and how we've kind of evolved the group to start working on some specific tasks and market areas. So let me pull up my notes here. This year, we've really focused on subdividing the group. We have four task force going on. You can see them on the screen, multi-family properties, community charger planning, older batteries, and second use applications for batteries and workplace charging. And each of the working groups has that several different contacts representing different companies on them. So it's really kind of a team sport as they work on these different topics. And each of these teams provided me a short sort of blurb about what they are doing in each one of their task force. So I'll actually use that as my notes and kind of you can hear it straight from the teams themselves. First up in in multi-family, multi-family properties such as condos, apartments, properties such as is a rapidly growing market for E V charging because access to charging is really becoming a required community resource for tenants that have E Vs and live in these spaces. But it's also crucial for property owners to remain competitive as they market themselves to potential tenants. Developing charging at multi-family properties will also positively impact overall charging equity as low and middle income families frequently live in multi-family residences residencies rather than single family homes owning your own home. However, guidelines for the type of development for E V charging at multi-family still remain fairly slim. It's a that it's usually a difficult process to get charging installed in a shared community like that. So the multi-family task force is meeting monthly to develop a go-to resource for incorporating E V charging into multi-family properties. And they're relying on key inputs from electric utilities, which will be integral to long-term success in adding charging at these properties. That includes, but aren't necessarily limited to E V basics, trends in the market, standards and benchmarks, business models for operating E V charging at multi-family properties, coordination considerations between utilities, consultants, property owners, et cetera. The goal is really to develop a guide that ties together existing resources that might be out there, but also adding fresh material as needed. The second task force is community charging planning. As communities around the valley and the nation work to facilitate the E V transition, there's a present ever-present need to be more strategic in where you place charging assets to serve existing customers, but also potential adopters within a community. There are a number of barriers that make accessing charging in communities more difficult, such as areas that have limited off-street parking, areas with high amounts of renters, historical inequalities that have driven disinvestment in this space. So this task force is taking lessons learned from private E V C E V S E charging development and analysis tools and exploring how these communities can leverage local data to drive strategic locally informed investments in charging. So think about, you know, open data sources, open platforms and tools to help communities plan for where charging infrastructure should go. I'm going to turn it over to Kent to talk about the last two task force.
Okay. Hi, Kent Minow here. I head up the the battery team. And I'll also read you what's happening with workplace charging. First of all, for older and second use batteries, the big concern about what to do with batteries after they've run down too much to be able to be used in a car. As E Vs age, consumers worry about the health, usefulness, replacement, and disposal of the lithium ion battery inside each vehicle. Large format batteries are new for consumers. And concerns arise around replacement costs and sustainable disposal. This task force is working to identify and make resources available to E V drivers around battery reuse companies, battery replacement options, and battery recycling developments, as well as basic information around battery manufacturing, and also new belt developments in battery technologies. And also, there's the working workplace charging group. And here's what they're doing. Numerous discussions have taken place in the past about workplace charging in Tennessee. And a few dozen businesses in the state already have workplace charging. However, it is projected that workplace charging could be the second or third most common place to charge as E V adoption grows. Fortuitously, a large D O E funded project focused on developing a national workplace charging program. It's entitled M Power. Now, this program will help provide some significant outreach planning, time, and materials into Tennessee starting later this year. And this task force will organize around that project to push outreach to workplaces in Tennessee from Memphis to Mountain City. Intentionally, that project has significant K P Is included to ensure that citizens in Tennessee's underserved communities realize at least thirty five percent of the benefits from the project and its commitments and installation. And so that's batteries and workplace charging on you, Drew.
Thanks, Kent. That wraps up the update for what's been going on in the infrastructure group over the last couple of months.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Drew, and thank you, Kent. So next, we will hear a little bit from the Awareness Working Group where the co-chairs again are Daniel Sixay of East Tennessee Clean Fuels and Brad Rains of T V P P A.
Thanks Savannah. Yeah, hello, everyone. I'm Daniel, one of the co-chairs for the Awareness Working Group. Brad Rains met already, obviously, and he's also recently joined us as the new co-chair of the Awareness Working Group. It's been a really good year for our working group in part because we have worked ourselves out of most of our jobs that we set out to do at the beginning of the year. Many of the projects that you're going to be hearing about over the course of the rest of the call had a home at least at some point in the Awareness Working Group, including the Specialty License Plate Program that you'll hear about, the Certified E V Dealer Program and the related E V dealership training sessions that that have been developed on the basis of getting dealerships more involved in selling E Vs in Tennessee, as well as chapter development efforts that have been happening across the state. All of those at some point this year, but have had their home or had a point of discussion or or a point of deliberation in the Awareness Working Group. And so we're looking forward to being able to start a new roster of projects for the coming year that are as successful as the ones that you're going to hear about today. The other big update is that the the co-chair makeup for for the Awareness Working Group is going to be changing. I am going to be stepping down as the Awareness Co-Chair over the course of the next month or two. We will be, we're currently looking for a replacement for the for my seat as the one of the co-chairs of Awareness. Please stay tuned for updates about that. You'll be hearing hearing from us soon. Brad, do you have any other any updates that you'd like to add to the Awareness Working Group?
I do not at this time. I think you've covered it well and looking forward to what this group does going forward.
This is going to be really exciting. Really, sorry. Awareness is is an important is is a working group within Drive Electric Tennessee that had that is one of the most public facing working groups. Because we're dealing with most of the time, how do we engage Tennessee residents in a way that is going to be effective at at building momentum and consumer engagement of electric vehicles? And so it's it's a really wide ranging working group that can take on a lot of stuff. And I'm not to toot our own horn, but our our working group members have been fantastic at being able to push through projects at a surprising rate. I'm really excited to see what Awareness has in store for us in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and beyond.
Well, thank you, Daniel, and thank you, Brad. As Daniel had mentioned, we are kind of at the drawing board at this point as far as projects for the Awareness Working Group. So we will be in the process of announcing those projects and also a new co-chair in the coming week. So stay tuned for that. And then next, we will be hearing from Alexa Voitek, one of the co-chairs. Laurel Creach is also a co-chair. He was also here on the call as well. And they will be providing some updates on the Policies and Programs Working Group.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. So with the Policies and Programs Working Group, I would say that in the last few months, we've mostly utilized that group as kind of a touch point or an information sharing mechanism for folks, particularly in light of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act and a lot of the different kind of funding opportunities that will be coming down the pike to support transportation electrification. So trying to kind of parse through a lot of that and and bring everybody up to speed so that everyone's aware of what those opportunities are and kind of preparing ourselves so that we can try and maximize the the dollars that come to Tennessee in that area. One of the other projects that we've been working on is we, through some support from T V A, we were able to contract with a film, a filming crew, an agency called Land Grant Films, which is a nonprofit that's also associated with the University of Tennessee and Knoxville School of Journalism. And so they are helping us to film the Local Government Action Plan Video Series. And so you can see a screenshot from one of the videos that we filmed for that on the screen today. And so this will be a multi-chapter video series that will essentially walk through all the different considerations that local governments, both big and small, may want to think about as they're trying to support transportation electrification, whether it be electrification of their own fleet, build out of community charging, ways to work with local utilities and and create varying incentives and so forth. So we're excited that this Local Government Action Plan Video Series is, we're finishing up the remaining chapters. I think by the first week. I think by the first week of August, we're hoping to have all of those filmed. And so we should be able to release that in the near future on the Drive Electric Tennessee website. Laurel, would you, do you have anything else to add in terms of the Policies and Programs Working Group?
No, I think you did great, Alexa. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Alexa, and thank you, Laurel. And that pretty much concludes all of our updates from our working groups. Something to stay tuned for is our programmatic work within the working groups. These projects, they're always evolving. We're, you know, constantly, again, at the drawing board to look at innovative ways that we can push electric vehicle adoption in Tennessee in, in the realm of infrastructure policies and programs and awareness. So again, if you would like to join any of those working groups, please reach out to me. I have, let me send it. I have just posted my email in the chat. So if you would like to join any of these working groups, you can email me and I will get you connected with our co-chairs. So next, Daniel will be providing an update on our EV license plate.
Thanks, Savannah. I'm happy to provide this update. I know that we've been getting many, many emails from folks across the state who are part of the original 1,100 folks who signed up for a plate with the first year's fees waived. Those emails are all asking very much the same question. What's the status? Now, the status is that the Tennessee Department of Revenue is currently evaluating our updated plate design, which you can see on the right-hand side of the screen. This is an updated plate design because as you may or may not heard, have heard, Tennessee released a new license plate, statewide license plate, I believe, last year that had some issues with recognition of cameras because of the contrasting background. We originally had our lightning bolts somewhat flowing through the numbers on our license plate. And there was some concern that the same problem would appear with this license plate versus the one that Tennessee introduced last year. And so we were asked to remake the license plate. We loved our original design and so we decided that we wanted to make, to bring the lightning bolts down so that the numbers could appear clearly and just make sure that you can still read that Drive Electric language at the bottom. The status is that second round of artwork is currently under review and we should be hearing any day now really about what the final decision is. At that point, plates should be able to be, start being constructed relatively quickly and the state should be getting in touch with every, every one of those original 1,100 people with instructions about how to, how to get their plate. When it comes to actually getting our plates, unfortunately, we don't really know yet. It is likely going to be sometime this year. But again, because we're going through this artwork process, in addition to the fact that it just takes time to build all these plates, we don't know when you're going to be able to get your plate, but 90% sure sometime in 2022. Finally, we've had lots of people asking, if I'm not one of the original 1,100 people who signed up, can I sign up now? So close, so close, almost. Once the plate's in production, then we'll be able to update our website with instructions on how you can do this and get, get registered for a new plate. It's not, the plate isn't currently in the Tennessee government system for being able to sign up yet. And that is eventually where it's going to live. And so once that process is set up, we will be sure to loudly broadcast where you can get Tennessee Specialty EV License Plate if you're not one of those original 1,100 folks. I'm so excited that this is happening. I know that there have been some delays that we haven't quite been able to communicate to our, to our original 1,100 audiences effectively as we wanted to. But rest assured, we're working hard to make sure that this process is happening and that these plates should be on cars sometime this year.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yeah.
And next, we will hear from Ainsley about our Certified EV Dealership Training Program.
Hey, excuse me. Good morning, everyone. My name is Ainsley Kelso and I am the Communications Coordinator for East Tennessee Clean Fuels as well as Drive Electric Tennessee. So I help Savannah with a lot of the communications. Most likely you've heard from me at one point or another related to Drive Electric Tennessee. And another project, as we all do, we wear a lot of hats in this office. And so another project that I have been helping out with is the Certified EV Dealership Training Program. This has been kind of a, a project that a lot of us have worked on in various different ways to make a reality. There were a lot of steps in making this project a reality and we're really excited to announce that we are launching it officially in August 2022, very early August. So as of, just as a little background for what this project is, this was a project of the Awareness Working Group and it is actually a deliverable for the Drive Electric USA program that we, Drive Electric Tennessee is a part of. This program is meant to serve both EV buyers and EV dealerships. So there is going to be a section on our website that is going to be dedicated to allowing kind of a dedicated page for EV buyers, people in Tennessee who might be interested in purchasing an electric vehicle, but they may not know where to buy one. You know, not every dealership is going to offer electric vehicles right away. It might take some time. And we have some fantastic partners already in Drive Electric Tennessee that do offer electric vehicles at their dealerships. So we wanted to offer a way for interested parties to be able to find those dealerships and know where they can go in the state to test drive, to ask their questions, to get good information about electric vehicles and to eventually drive off the lot with their very own EV. So this page is going to be set up with kind of a Q and A. It's going to have a map of all the EV dealerships that become certified through our program in the state. And then there's also going to be a section for dealerships. There is going to be a little bit of a process that dealerships will go through and that is how we will kind of be able to certify them as an EV dealer. They will have to apply to the program and meet our requirements. I won't go through the requirements today, but that is something that will be available online for anyone to take a look at. It'll be things like they need to strive to have EVs on their lot at all times. We know with supply chain issues, that is going to mean very difficult, but it's something that we want to encourage them to have available. They'll need to offer ride and drives and things like that to their, and educate their interested parties that come looking for EVs along with some things related to Drive Electric Tennessee and some of their membership with us. They'll submit their application and then they will, once they're approved, they will go through a training course. The training course is what we have put so much time and effort into and which is why this program has taken a little bit longer to launch than some of our others. We have wanted to create a really great comprehensive program that dealerships, they can get online. It's a series of videos and quizzes and they, someone from the dealership, ideally someone on a managerial level, someone who is going to be at the dealership for a long time, is going to go through this course and is going to be asked to share this information with their, with the salespeople and with anybody else who's going to be selling EVs at their dealership. They'll complete the training course and they will, at that point in time, be certified as an EV dealer. We'll then add them to the map on our website. They will have the option to become a member of Drive Electric Tennessee if they so choose. And they will get all the benefits of that as well as EV buyers from around the state will benefit from having easy access to a map and to information about these dealerships. So as you can see, it's not just anyone that's going to be certified as an EV dealer. There's a process they have to go through. They have to really want it to be able to do it. And they have to continue to meet those requirements, which is something that Drive Electric Tennessee is personally going to make sure we're checking in on. And we're making sure that these dealerships are kind of staying up to the requirement so that we can continue to call them a certified EV dealer. We think this program is going to be a really big help to people in Tennessee that are looking to buy an electric vehicle. We want to make the process as easy as possible for them and we want to feel confident that the dealerships we're sending them to are equipped with the right materials and the right training to be able to serve them best when they're looking for an electric vehicle. So all of these things have gone into creating the Certified EV Dealer Training and we're really excited to officially have the course and everything completed here very soon and launch that in August. We'll start contacting dealerships. We'll start reaching out to people and seeing if they want to become a certified EV dealer. We had previously done this and we had a lot of interest. So I have a feeling by the end of 2022, we're going to have a lot of dealerships that are on that map and that are going to be ready to start selling EVs to the public in a really educated and interesting way. If you have any questions about this program, you're welcome to reach out to either Savannah or Daniel and Brad in the Awareness Group. You can also reach out to me at ainsley@etcleanfuels.org. I'm also always willing to talk about this program because it's something that I've put a lot of time into. Madeline Collins in our office put a lot of time into videoing and editing our training course. And so we really are excited to launch this here coming soon.
Yeah, this is one of my personal favorite programs because if you think about electric vehicle adoption, it's really important to hit the public when they're at that point, when they're ready to buy a car. And it's so important to have sales representatives trained on EVs because, I mean, they're going to talk about the product that they're most comfortable with. So giving them the proper training in place, they can really talk about electric vehicles to those buyers and then hopefully convert them over and then that will help us towards our goal and mission even quicker. So very excited about this program and this will hopefully launch by the end of this year. So with that being said, we will transition over to chapter development and I would like to introduce Jack Goodwin. He is our Chapter Development Advisor and has helped us to make tremendous leaps and bounds with this initiative. So, Jack.
Thank you, Savannah. I was recruited into this role the first of this year with the expectation that we would be able to build out a network of local and regional chapters throughout the state. The best way to accelerate EV adoption is having people on the ground, talking to their friends, talking to their neighbors, talking to their coworkers about the EV experience and then putting those people in the seats of those cars to find out what it's all about. So we're working right now to develop local or regional chapters throughout the state. They will feature programming and awareness in their area because each area, each region has its own set of concerns, its own, own set of issues and how to put the pieces together. And so we want very much the local presence focusing on, on local needs. Each chapter will be expected to host EV events to put those people in, in seats and see what that's all about. I would encourage you to go to the website for National Drive Electric Week. It's driveelectricweek.org and enter your location. You can find any events that are happening in late September as part of National Drive Electric Week in your area. Right now, we have through the Knoxville Electric Vehicle Association, our Drive Electric Tennessee Smoky Mountains Chapter, an event in Knoxville on September 24th. And our Chattanooga Chapter is scheduling one for October 1st. We expect others to be added to the list. That's updated regularly. Our chapters will be involving local leaders, local people in what they're doing, participating in the identification and electrification of fleets and infrastructure. Basically, we have a set of ideas of what it would take to make each chapter, each chapter sustainable, consisting of leadership team, membership communications mechanisms and such. And with that, let's go to the next slide, Savannah. So this is kind of the concept we have for where we would find chapters around the state. In Upper East Tennessee, Drive Electric Appalachian Islands, that chapter is well underway, on their way to sustainability. In Chattanooga, Drive Electric Scenic City, also well on its way to sustainability. And out in Memphis, Drive Electric, the final name to be pinned down a little later is well on its way. Drive Electric Upper Cumberland is also well underway toward development. We are expecting that we will move on to try to build out chapters in Clarksville area, in the Nashville area, in Upper West Tennessee and probably in the area around Jackson, Tennessee. With that, I'm going to put my email in the chat room. If you want any more information, if you would like to connect with a chapter or help to develop a chapter in your area, let me know and I'll work with you and we will move that process along.
And one of the fun things about chapters is they help host ride and drive events. So, you know, with the ride and drives, those really help people get into the cars and really feel and get the full experience of what it is, what it's like to ride and drive an electric vehicle. So you'll hear our organization say, well, and Jonathan specifically, butts and seats. So that's really the best way to get people introduced to electric vehicles and feel the difference and really the improvement from ICE vehicles. So really, we wouldn't be where we are now if it weren't for chapters. They really help us with the education and outreach piece of everything. So with that being said, we'll transition over to the Electrify America Promotion Campaign and Ainsley Kelso will tell us a little bit more about that. Ainsley?
Thank you, Savannah. So this is a project that's a little, bear with me, it's a little convoluted, but it's so exciting and it has been so good for Drive Electric Tennessee. So we really wanted to make sure that we've shared it, we share it with you guys during the town hall because the attention that we've brought to the Drive Electric Tennessee program through this funding that we got for Electrify America has been just immense. People all over the state are seeing these, this campaign and I'm really excited to talk about it. So this, just for a little context, this is a project that was initially funded by Electrify America sometime, I want to say last year. It is a three-state project between Drive Electric Tennessee, Drive Electric Georgia and Drive Electric Alabama. We have coordinated with the State Association of Broadcasters. So for Tennessee, that is the Tennessee Association of Broadcasters or TAB. Chris Baker is the president and he has been a great help and he is a big proponent of the Drive Electric Tennessee program. He has really been fantastic to work with. So this project was set out to be a, kind of a promotional campaign for Drive Electric Tennessee. So when we sat down and we were talking about the direction we wanted to take Drive Electric Tennessee, we were looking at things and we thought, we need Drive Electric Tennessee to become a household name. We need people to know who we are, know our logo, know what we do and know that we exist. And this promotional campaign has been the quickest way that we've been able to do that. So through that funding from Electrify America, we were able to get in with the State Association of Broadcasters to, they have something called a PEP program. Essentially what that program is, is they accept different nonprofits and they give them a discounted rate to do advertising all over the state. That is television, radio and digital slash web advertisements. So the first round of these, we did a three-month campaign with them and it was January through March 2022. So that was earlier this year. In just a minute, I'm going to go to the next slide and we're going to talk about the, we're going to talk a little bit more about the numbers. If you'll go back, Savannah, sorry, we'll talk about that in just a second. I'll tell you about how that, that project went. But we wanted to announce today that we're super excited that Electrify America has agreed to fund an additional six months of the, of the program. So they were really impressed with the numbers. They were really impressed with the engagement that all three of our states got. And especially in Tennessee, we did a fantastic job and we had really great engagement. So they agreed to fund an additional six months of this program. So what that looks like is that is six more months of our advertisements being on television stations all across the state, on radio stations all across the state and on digital and web all over Tennessee and kind of a little bit beyond that. So I know personally, I've had my own family text me, call me and tell me, I saw the Drive Electric Tennessee advertisement on TV. You know, check your local, when you're watching the local news station at night or in the morning, they may play our advertisement. If you're listening to your local radio station, sometimes they might play our advertisement. These advertisements are meant to be a way to talk about the positive things with electric vehicles like saving money and then being fun to drive and they're kind of little testimonial ads that are just about kind of, they're real quick. They're between kind of 30 and 60 seconds. And they're about the exciting parts of driving electric, as well as it's meant to drive people to the Drive Electric Tennessee website so they can learn more about our program and learn more in general about electric vehicles because we have a lot of information on our website. One big thing I wanted to point out that was exciting for us is these ran on YouTube as little YouTube pre-roll ads. The State Association of Broadcasters managed that for us. The State Association of Broadcasters managed that for us. So as you can see, we had published this little clip right here. We had published the video ad on our YouTube channel and we ended up getting. I'm trying to see like over a hundred thousand views just on that ad alone. And that is from it playing on on videos before they start. So that is just one ad. I think on the second ad, we got near close to 40,000 views. So that's almost 150,000 views total on these, just these two ads alone. That doesn't even count the advertising we did on TV, on radio or the the digital display ads that we did on websites. So this has been a massive success. I cannot, you know, emphasize that this enough. The money that we spent, we saw a return tenfold, even more than that. We saw a huge success. And before I move on, I just wanted to mention that that additional six months, so we are already running advert, the advertising again for July through September. That is the first of the six additional six months. And then for October through December, we'll do a new round of advertising. We are in the process of planning the creative for that. We're going to shoot brand new ads. They're going to be new things live on TV. If you have any creative ideas for that, please let us know because we're in the process of creating it. And we'll have some new stuff running all the way through the end of 2022. Savannah, if you'll go to the next slide. So real quick, I wanted to break down some of the numbers and some of the return we saw because I think it is definitely worth talking about for this program. So if you can see over to the side in that red impressions box and that blue clicks box. That is just for the digital aspect of this program. That is just for those digital display ads as well as those YouTube ads. We saw 16,789,000 and then some impressions. Now you might be wondering what's an impression? An impression is essentially a view. If someone sees it, if it pops up on somebody's screen, that is considered an impression. That's over almost 17 million times that the Drive Electric Tennessee advertisements showed up on somebody's screen. And over over 11,000 times, someone actually clicked on it and went to our website. I can confirm that we saw an increase in traffic to our website because of this, which is a huge success for us. Because we, one of our goals is to always have people coming to our website and learning more. We have so much great information. We have so much information about events. And about upcoming news and announcements on our website and we're constantly updating it. So one of our goals is to always drive people there and to have them learning more. If you look over to the left, you can see there is a summary of our television and radio ads over the. Three, actually closer to four months, we had it running. We got.
Yes. Sorry to interrupt you. That was time, by the way.
Okay, perfect. I'll just wrap it up by saying that we are so excited to have this program running again through December. And if you want more information about it, you're always welcome to reach out and learn more from me.
I think my grandmother actually saw one of these ads. So a huge thank you to Electrify America for making this campaign possible. Again, this was, this allowed us to bring DEP to so many households that we wouldn't have been able to do. So next, I just wanted to bring up, bring to your attention really, some, a couple of events that we have coming up. So next week, 10 Smart is hosting the Tennessee Smart Mobility Expo. So underneath the dates, you can see, and again, we will be sharing our slides after the town hall. You can click, these are all links where you can register to the event. But August 4th through the 6th, the expo will be held at the Music City Center in Nashville, Tennessee. There will be an indoor track where you will be able to test drive, test drive electric vehicles. And then on that Saturday, on the 6th, TBA will be hosting a ride and drive that will be free to the public. Drive Electric Tennessee will be hosting the ride and drive that's on the indoor portion. Jack will also be sharing, he will be providing his Tesla that that Friday. So people, if you are able to attend the expo, you can test drive Jack's Tesla. And then coming up on November 7th, we have the DEP Momentum Summit. So this is serving as a workshop where we, we are going to be continuing to identify barriers. And then, you know, maybe we had some new ones that arise over the last year or, you know, maybe some of the barriers that we had identified the year before. Might not be as big of an issue. So the whole main purpose of the Momentum Summit is to identify what those barriers are and what we can do to. Eliminate and alleviate those those issues. So more, more to come with that. You can again, click the link where it says more info and find out more about the Momentum Summit. So very, very exciting. This is going to be our first Momentum Summit in person. And then the next two days to follow the Momentum Summit, these will both be in Knoxville, Tennessee at the Student Union Center in the University of Tennessee. So that November 8th and 9th is the Tennessee Sustainable Transportation Forum in Expo, or you will hear a lot of times us call it STEFI. So this will be highlighting sustainable transportation initiatives that have occurred across the state. Including research projects and ongoing initiatives to push greener transportation modes across the state. And then two of our chapters are actually participating in. National Drive Electric Week. Well, one, one of the events is one of our chapters, but in Chattanooga, Tennessee on October 1st. So Drive Electric Scenic City is hosting a National Drive Electric Week event. So again, you can click that register here. So when you click on that link, you will see that there's two, two options. You can either. Register as an attendee or you can register as a participant. And if say you are an electric vehicle owner and you really want to showcase your car, let people ride in it, maybe even drive it. You can go and click the link and register as a participant. But if you would just like to attend as an attendee, you can register as an attendant. And then on November, or I'm sorry, excuse me, September 24th. Kiva, which Jack is also a part of, they will be hosting their second annual National Drive Electric Week event. So again, you can register by clicking the link there. You can either register as a participant or an attendee there as well. I think, Jack, correct me, but I believe you all had over 80 vehicles last year?
We had 86 vehicles if you don't count the cat bus or. E-bikes or one wheels or things like that, over 100 if you do count those.
It was a fantastic event. It was held at the Pelus City State Community College. And is it going to be at the same location this year?
Yes, it is. And we're, we've got some really exciting vehicles already registered. You can see that if you go to the. Event page, there's a list of vehicles that are already signed up.
And again, just to talk about chapters a little bit more, as our chapters develop, they will be hosting their own National Drive Electric Week event. So you will be seeing more of these events pop up. So this year we have two. And then hopefully next year at our next town hall, we can tell you about maybe four or five.
I really expect to see events open up in Memphis and in Upper Cumberland for this year.
All right. Well, that transitions us into our Q and A portion of the town hall. So I saw that there were a couple of questions in the chat, a lot of great conversations. So again, this, we have really the next, I believe, 10ish minutes to address any questions you may have. I saw earlier, someone had asked about, you know, they're having difficulty with finding an EV. You know, with supply chain issues being where they are, I can, I feel that that problem. As the Drive Electric Tennessee EV Certified EV Dealership Training Program launches and these. These dealerships go through our training program. As Ainsley had mentioned, we are in the process of creating a map where we will showcase all of those certified EV dealerships. So you know, if you're looking, if you are shopping or if you have a friend that is in the process of purchasing an EV, please direct them to that, that webpage when it does launch. Because we will have a list, we'll have a map of where you can, you will be able to purchase an EV. And then, let's see. Any other question? Yeah.
Let me weigh in on Chin Fei's comment because it was a great one. She asked about the Certified EV Dealership. Program. Cause there's training in that. It's kind of natural to think that you're going to reach out to. VWs and the the Fords and the Chevys, et cetera, Nissans. And we're going to do that, but her comment was about used EVs kind of equity focused and I thought it was a good one. I think oftentimes you see used EVs in a used EV lot. You'll see them on a dealership lot too, and they'll have all kinds of brands. As you probably know, Chin Fei, the level of education at your average dealership, even about the EVs that they sell that aren't used is not great. Lack of, for a nice way to say it. So it's one of those challenges and that's why Tennessee and other states are working on that. However, you can, if you go look up used EVs online, you can go to CarSaver and Vroom and a lot of the usual ones that you would think of. To look for used EVs, trying to educate used EV dealerships beyond the main dealerships for. For OEMs is, I don't know, it seems like more of a challenge, but I think. The group that's working on that needs to think about it. And one of the thoughts that came to me was at least put some links. To where you can buy used EVs somewhere there. I don't know, that may go against the grain of the, the way the program works, but I just. I, I thought it was a good question. I wrote it down and we'll try to work on that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think there's a lot, this is not an easy task. There's a lot of EV education and also used. So I, I just thought we need to have a special consideration for this. Using EV for dealership.
Good point.
Savannah, I believe Chin Fei also had a question that I thought was really a great one about DEP in general, about DEP working groups. Chin Fei, would you like to ask that about that overlap?
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, that my other question is, there's a lot of overlapping, I feel like, working among, across the working groups. So if, I, I feel like some of the question need to address together at the same time. For example, multi-housing, family housing is infrastructure also policy and awareness. So I don't know how, how are we going to structure this or bring a conversation, a special topic or something like that?
No, I think that's a great question. And I was actually just talking to Brad Rains about that this morning. A goal of mine that I have for the next year is to have regular meetings with our co-chairs to talk about. Cause I do believe that a lot of the work that infrastructure or policies and programs are doing can transition over into awareness. As soon as our, the local action playbook is released, I would love to take, you know, send that over to awareness and then they, you know, build a campaign around that so we can promote it across the state. So I do think that there's overlap in our working groups and in order for our working groups to be able to see that, we do need to be meeting together as a group regularly. And that, you know, that is in the work. So yes, again, great question. And yeah, it's, it's something that we are working on to address.
Okay. To, sorry, sorry to interrupt. You can add me to diversity inclusion or just this group, if, if there's a group.
Hey Savannah, this is Drew. I was just going to say, on the, on the infrastructure side, when we were sort of scoping out the task force for multifamily. One of those cross-cutting things that have to do with both policy and infrastructure is, is building codes. And we specifically called that out as something that would be cross-cutting amongst the policy team and the infrastructure team. And sort of set it to the side outside of infrastructure to say, you know, that's something we need to do in coordination with the policy team. So I just encourage each group as they're going through each of their topics, if there are those cross-cutting. Items that would go across groups that we should identify those and then kind of through Savannah and others kind of make those connections. And so it might be kind of a, a joint working session or at least just knowing that those things cross over, touch each group.
Yeah, I think that's great. You know, I'm, I'm already thinking with the, you know, as like when you're talking about the coding, Drew. You know, we could, we could pull some of the members of the infrastructure working group and from awareness and. Bring them together as a task force to, to promote and to develop those codes. So yeah, I'm looking forward at. That you will, you all will be seeing a doodle poll from me as far as when we will be meeting, but I, I would like to see our co-chairs meeting together more regularly.
Hey folks, I have a quick question if you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike. I, I have a company called Schwender LLC and we are, we're working with fleets specifically as they transition to electrical trucks. And identifying routes that they go on and figuring out kind of what trucking routes will look like with EVs. So we'll, we work with like EXOs for example. So it's the combination of, I guess, state commercial and logistics. So I guess out of the groups that you discussed, what would be our approach in the state of Tennessee? I guess like right now, we're in South Dakota, Virginia, Maryland and. That's, that's it at this point, but we're, you know. I went to University of Tennessee for a little bit and I like Tennessee and I got a. One of my coworkers is out there. So we, you know, we're interested in the state helping out in any way we can.
Thank you, Mike. Jonathan, I was going to say, I'd, I'd like you, for you to address this question.
Well, we may need to talk about that offline, Mike. We did work directly with fleets. There was some discussion amongst the executive committee and some other folks in DEP about. About starting a fourth working group that would be focused on fleets. I think we all just got busy and that got kind of sidetracked a little bit. We've talked a couple of times about create, trying to create a fourth working group. Cause there's other problems we can go work on and barriers we can address, but we don't have a fleets group right now. So we do have a, a green fleets planning group. It's not really part of DEP. It's part of a project. But let's talk about that a little bit more because we, we want people to understand what you guys are doing and know the opportunity. But I'm not sure I have an easy answer.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem. Yeah, happy to just discuss that offline. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
And then I know Mr. Burns had a quick question, Savannah, on feasibility. Jay Burns, do you want to speak up and? Ask your question? I know I'll put you on the spot there.
Why don't we just ask it? So the question Savannah, I'll just read it aloud and then anybody can answer. So it said, I can appreciate the need to concentrate on population centers, but for us in rural areas and our EVs realistic or do we need to come back in the future, say another 10 years?
Well, let me try to get a quick answer and then other folks can jump in. The vast majority of people that buy an EV end up charging at home, but we have a couple of different groups and people that are trying to work on rural plans. There was a workshop we had last month that was focused on just the Upper Cumberland because we were working with a few people in that region to talk about. Corridor DC fast charge, non corridor DC fast charge. If you think about the upper middle part of Tennessee or Upper Cumberland, you could be talking about. Livingston or some of the other cities or Sparta that are on I-40. But how do we get DC fast chargers kind of in the center of a county that's a rural county, but then also level two? And so what we hope to do is have more community, whether it's, you know, two or three counties or bigger on what would be good ideas for where. Charging could go in that community and how do we get a few people in that community ready when funding comes out to consider that? Is it work with the local power company? Is it get some business leaders in the community, the mayor, city councilman or something to take an interest in this? So we want to do more work in terms of offering DC fast and level two in rural areas, when, even though we may be focused a lot on corridors in one way.
And I'd be happy to quickly jump in here and just say that while right now I live in Knoxville, Tennessee, which is not a rural area, I am personally from a rural area. And I've actually seen over the course of, you know, just of people from my hometown, I've seen over the course of the last year, an increase in EVs even in my. Very rural hometown, which shocked me beyond belief. And I know it's possible. I know people see it's possible. I think as the technology continues to evolve and we see, a lot of people mentioned in the chat, we see ranges going up. You know, they're only going to continue to get more and more. And so if an EV that you're able to find today, maybe it doesn't. Have the right range for you right at this moment. I don't think you're going to have to wait 10 years to find the right electric vehicle. I think if anything, you might wait two years tops. I think EVs are changing so quickly and EV infrastructure is changing so quickly and, you know, evolving rapidly to be put into workplaces and public property. And people are getting them in their homes and they're getting added into new housing developments. I think that this stuff is changing so fast that even in rural areas, it's not going to be much longer before it's actually very feasible. So if it's, maybe it's not today, but that doesn't mean it won't be in the next year or two for you.
Yeah. And I'll also just reference to that, the Atlas EV Hub EV registration data portal that I mentioned earlier. Through that, you can see that we actually already have EV. Through that, you can see that we actually already have EVs in every county within Tennessee. So there's at least one electric vehicle in every single county, which I think is, is interesting when you think about some of the more rural parts of the state. But taking into account that, like Jonathan mentioned, a lot of charging occurs at home. I think it's, there's definitely a use case and we're trying to build out the public network as well in some of the more rural areas over the next couple of years.
And Alexa, while you're here, Kent asked a question about EV adoption. I mean, one of us could weigh in, but do you want to? He said, do we have, do we at DET provide analysis on exponential growth, whether showing the latest numbers? You know, some kind of S curve stuff. And I know in the executive committee, we've talked about that, but didn't know if you wanted to.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't done like formal analysis per se. I know Ryan Stanton has played with quarter over quarter numbers in terms of graphing them and kind of looking at different exponential growth curves and things like that. So I think we've done it. We haven't published it anywhere, but that is something that we could, we could possibly do at some point and put on the DET website.
And I know Amelia's about to say time, but was there something else Savannah or Ainsley that you saw that we need to answer before we move on?
Not, not at the moment. I will say, we will take some time after the town hall to address these questions that we're not be able to, that we're not, that we were not able to answer during the Q and A today. And then we also have some time towards the end of the town hall. So if we do have extra time towards the end, we can try and revisit some of these questions that are in the chat.
And as we transition, and I'll just note Chuck Carville's comment. So thanks Chuck at Central States, talking about how they're helping school districts. See chat if you want to see Chuck's comment.
All right. Well, this was certainly a great discussion and I wish that we could continue it, but we do need to move on with our town hall. So next, we will be transitioning into local power company incentives updates and project and fleet updates as well. So Jonathan, would you like to transition there?
Sure. So we're, we're going into the next phase here and our incentive part of this discussion is going to be pretty brief, but then we're going to have more substantial information on fleets and projects. Obviously, this is still two hours. We realize you all are busy and have limited time, but we want to just kind of give you some ideas about different things that are going on in the state. And then next year, we'll try to make sure we're talking about other fleets and examples. And some of these will start, more of these will start going on the Drive Electric Tennessee website as news items as well. The reason you see Lee Smith on here, I just thought I would note that they are one of the dealerships in the state that is really trying to work on electric vehicles. And so they have, I think it is this mid roof as well as a high roof of the Ford E-Transit. So that they, they want to sell EVs. So these are some of the partnerships we want to see rise in Tennessee to help us get there. So just wanted to point out, Lee Smith, they're, they're in Chattanooga. And so I think we're starting with incentives and then going into fleets. And I believe you're next, Savannah, is that right?
That is correct. So very excited to announce that EPB recently released a incentive program that is available. Well, they began in January 21st, or January 1st, and it will transition through the end of this year. And then KUB also has an incentive program. We created this year, one of our interns in-house was able to create an incentives and rebate page on our, on the Drive Electric Tennessee program, or I'm sorry, on the website that will, that provides you a little bit more information and links as well to the incentives that are available. So you can scan the QR code there on the right to learn more about the incentives that are being offered by local power companies. And just so you know, Drive Electric Tennessee does engage local power companies on a monthly basis on a virtual call where we talk about a wide array of things. And one of the topics that we do talk about is incentive programs to offer to the public. So just know that we are working to hopefully have a longer list by the time the next town hall rolls around that we will have more incentive programs in place at the local power companies across the state. And with that being said, we will transition over to our first fleet update. So Jonathan, would you like to introduce Shelby County?
Yes, thanks. Lee, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Good morning. Yeah, so Lee has been a partner working in Shelby County and really pleased for everything they have going on and the floor is yours, Lee.
Okay, so Shelby County has been making a lot of moves in this last year, two years to start doing a pilot program for the county fleet. So we received a DOE grant to have a pilot program of five electric vehicles, one medium duty class six truck that we're going to be using with our roads, bridges and engineering department. They're going to greatly expand their illegal dumping of tires pickup program with that truck. So it's kind of an all-around, hoping to do both the electric transition, but also help with sustainability projects throughout the county. And then also for roads, bridges and engineering, we are wanting to purchase four light duty EVs. We're in the process of hopefully getting in the 2023 model years of the F-150 Lightnings. But if not, then we probably are going to go with a different Ford vehicle. In addition, through this grant, we're going to install two to three DC fast chargers as well as at least four level two chargers. They'll all be at the roads, bridges and engineering facility to help with those vehicles. Yeah, so that's the big exciting part. I think the other big news that's not on here is that Shelby County did purchase their first electric vehicle this last year. It was a Chevy Bolt and it's being used by our housing department for their inspections.
Thanks, Lee. Appreciate it. And so next up will be Vasu Pramlani from the city of Nashville, I believe. Or it looks like it may be deputy. Okay, let's, let's go with Vasu Savannah and then we'll go back to Deputy Chief Severs.
Hi. Thanks for this. Can we go on to the next slide, please? Yeah, the next one. Yeah, so we have at Metro Nashville, we have a bill just 2019 that requires 100% electrification of our fleet by 2050. And we have a step, a share step approach where you're recommending zero electric EVs, sorry, zero emission vehicles or no emission vehicles, but we're leaning towards EVs from the very beginning. Even though, as you can see, this is an approach which allows for low emission vehicles. So we have a purchase scheduled for this year, the next slide. And these are exempt vehicles, which are emergency vehicles. So that, that sets the diagram, the shape that you see. So that's our population of vehicles of a little in excess of 3,600. The next slide.
And then Vasu, I don't know if you would mind speaking up just a little bit. It might just be me, but I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. The, for 2022, we are slated to order 59 vehicles, 14 cargo vehicles and 117 trucks. We, we are expecting to receive them in the next 18 to 24 months. Next slide, please. And in preparation. That's time, by the way. That's fine. Okay. Like you just give me 10 seconds. We are preparing for EBSE future proofing as well, next slide. And we're doing some analysis so we can talk about it. So this is a little maybe, you know, this is me. Thanks.
Thank you, Vasu. And apologies for the, for the audio there, but the gist of what Nashville's doing, depending on how you could hear, is some pretty big acquisitions of bringing EVs into their fleet. So great news. If you would back up to Deputy Chief Severs, please Savannah, and then we'll go back to Drew. Yeah, so Chief Severs, really appreciate your time and the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you so much. I will be brief and I apologize I don't have my video on, but I updated Zoom just a few minutes ago and it kind of got a little wonky on me. So I turned it off and it made it better. So in the fall of last year, we looked at, actually last spring, we demoed the, the Zero motorcycles. We purchased the two Zero motorcycles in the fall of last year. So we, we purchased the Zero, the FX model, the dual sports. And it's kind of dipping our toe into the electric vehicle world. But honestly, whenever we were looking at, at the uses for these motorcycles on, on campus, there are a good number of them from a strategic and tactical standpoint. Primarily, they are used by our Strategic Initiatives Unit who are our, it's a group of authors that we utilize to surgically address criminal problems in certain areas of campus when they arise. And the Zero bikes allow them the opportunity to, and, and you can't even hear them coming. I mean, they're quiet and that, and that's not a surprise to this group. But it gives us a tremendous tactical advantage, especially in certain areas like parking structures. They have, we also have the ability to utilize them in parts of campus that you just can't access by a vehicle, pedestrian mall. Some of the, the greenways adjacent to or near campus. So they've been a great addition to our fleet and it certainly gives us more tools in our toolbox to, to help keep our campus safe, which is always going to be our goal. So, so we'll see if, if, if we, if we dip our toes any further in the future. There's not been many discussions about it, but a few. So we'll see where we end up.
That's awesome. And looking forward to hearing more stories about their use, Deputy Chief. So thanks a lot.
You're welcome. You all have a great day.
All right. And I think we are going back to Drew Fry and TVA. The floor is yours, Drew.
Thanks, Jonathan. So I'm really just speaking on behalf of our Fleet Services Group today, who are in charge of and doing such great work to electrify TVA's fleet. But just so everyone knows, TVA recently announced a plan to electrify all of our light duty and half of our medium duty vehicles by 2030. So this is going to result in over 1,400 electric vehicles being added to the TVA fleet over the next few years. So it's a, it's a really kind of lofty goal. We currently have about 80 electric vehicles in the TVA fleet, fleet as it is. We have an internal car share kind of rental service that employees can use for business purposes as well as more traditionally assigned vehicles. We have pretty much every make and model of electric vehicle that is out there. So we have vehicles from Ford, General Motors, Hyundai, Kia, Mitsubishi, Nissan, Tesla, Volkswagen, including the Ford F-150 Lightning shown on the screen there. We currently have a hundred 110 level two charging stations and will be yours as we start to add all of our electric vehicles. TVA operates on a five-year vehicle replacement window. So we keep vehicles for five years and then turn them over. So that can lead to a very aggressive plan if we just start replacing all the old ones with electric vehicles. So that's, that's the game plan. So we're not getting rid of any vehicles that we would not otherwise be getting rid of as part of our lifecycle replacement.
That's awesome, Drew. 1,400, that's a lot of vehicles. Look forward to hearing more from you guys on these and seeing Ford Lightning as I haven't seen one myself yet. Knoxville Area Transit. So Becca James and Si McMurray with CAT were, were kind enough to provide the slide, but they were at a couple of different meetings who could not join us today. But multiple mass transit agencies in Tennessee have been working on heavy-duty electric vehicles, mass transit buses for years, but just want to highlight Knoxville Area Transit. So they have 11 electric buses that are on seven routes. They run the longest in the spring and the fall due to temperature between 11 and 13 hours, depending on the route for a daily route without charging. In temperatures above 85 degrees, they use about 10 plus percent more power. So it reduces some of that range. I think most of us know this, when you talk about EVs that when you use accessory power, whatever it is, it tends to eat into some of your range, just the way it is. School buses are an example. You see auxiliary systems that are provided for, for extra heating that can keep from reducing the mileage in all electric school buses. But they judge them by runtime versus the miles because they do so much stop and go. They recharge from about 30 to 90% in a little less than two hours. And then the, the reception by the passengers has been great. What CAT has told us is that just so quiet, so nice, it just feels a little bit more like a rest instead of just continuing on with the busy day with the, the noise reduction as one particular facet of it. And thanks to CAT for offering a tour earlier this year so we can see the charging equipment they have at their site in Knoxville. And with that, I think we'll go to the next fleet, Savannah. Yep. So Eric Schmitz, the Director of Sustainability for Chattanooga. And Eric, the floor is yours, sir.
Sorry, can never get unmuted fast enough. Thanks, thanks for the introduction. Thanks for being a part of this today, letting us be a part of this. So yeah, we are on the front end of our journey into electrification, but we have some really good things, anchors, projects to help push us forward. And I, I think I would preface this work with, there's an intention that we're working on right now with sort of, if I call it codify, but adopting a, a formal climate action plan with a 2015 net zero carbon goal. And then with all relevant fleet and building energies and other kind of drivers, carbon reduction plans there. So with that, sort of jumped to the bottom of my bullets is the, the goal to develop a plan for 100% conversion of light duty vehicles. And then an appropriate plan might remain kind of flexible with emerging technologies for medium and heavy duty. But so as an, as an anchor project, the administration, Mayor Kelly's administration has dedicated $100,000 to an equitable EV infrastructure project. And that is going to be greatly enhanced with the use of EPV's EV rebate program. I've got the, the highlights of that essentially is $500 per non-network level two minimum port and $2,000 for networked port. The vast majority of ours will be level two. We might be able to get in a couple of DC fast chargers in places like City Hall. But there will be a focus right now on sort of infilling and complementing the, the TVA fast charger network within our footprint, our municipal footprint. So the easiest thing to do for us in terms of, of getting these things. Yep, sorry.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. That was time.
That was time. Okay. Well, you can see it there. We've got, and I would just say too, we've got 20 non-plug-in hybrids, police department SUVs, one small Ford Focus and we'll move on from there. Thanks for having us.
Thank you, Eric. And you can see on the right, the, the project they have worked on with the medium duty electric coming as well. So looking forward to hearing about these getting installed and used in Chattanooga. So next up is Matt McClellan from Covenant Logistics. Just real quickly, I'll say there's obviously not a lot of work going on in the heavy duty space. So we appreciate Covenant as a Tennessee-based business, kind of doing some homework on this. And Matt, appreciate your time. The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. And great to follow up another Chattanooga person. The picture you're looking at right now is Gertie, our 1985 GMC Brigadier. That was the first truck in our fleet. Gertie got terrible gas mileage, had ridiculous high emissions. And by modern day standards is an embarrassment to be on the road, but she's still part of our fleet. She just doesn't run freight for us. On the other side, you see the Nicola Trey, 100% renewable electric truck. It's our first one in the fleet. We're using it for customer demonstrations over the next six months. What Jonathan wanted to talk, wanted me to talk about today briefly was the experience we had at Delta Airlines down in Atlanta, which I know is Georgia and not Tennessee, but that is where we did the project. It went flawlessly. The truck operated perfectly. The only problem was, as you can probably see from the transformer-like, you know, appearance, is that people on 285 in Atlanta kept merging into the truck's lane as they were trying to take pictures of the truck because it looked so unusual. The driver loved it, was grumpy that we took it away. Driver fatigue was reduced. The driver loved it, the customer loved it. The problem is, it's just a very expensive vehicle. And so that's, you know, for companies like Delta and others that have sustainability initiatives, you know, it's one thing to be net carbon neutral by 2030, 2040, 2050, and it's another thing to kind of pony up and start spending money on some of the ways that the solutions it's going to take for us to get there. We are about to put it into play at a second customer location, actually here in Tennessee in the next couple of weeks. It's actually here in Chattanooga right now. So if anyone's here in Chattanooga wants to come by and see it, and I could probably even work out a ride if you want to. We like the optics of it, driving around. Our friends from TVA, if you want to come have a look at it, it's here. If you want to give us some free power to charge it, we'd also accept that as well. It has been a, you know, a big talking point in our industry. And as Jonathan pointed out, it is, there's not a lot going on in the space for the large fleets like ours for two reasons, really three reasons. One is planning for the electrical infrastructure is difficult. It's time-consuming. It's expensive. It's almost more expensive than the truck itself. There's obviously not enough time to kind of go through all of that. But when you start having these conversations with customers and they start looking into what it would take to put charging stations at their warehouse locations, it's a very difficult conversation to have because it's the first time they've gone through it and there's a lot of cost involved. The second problem with it is the range, of course, is limited to 300 to 350 miles, depending on, you know, the kind of truck that you've got. For long-haul fleets like Covenant, US Express, also here in Chattanooga, those lengths are just not sufficient for the majority of the work that we do. Although we do believe this truck will go into play doing local deliveries here in Chattanooga very soon. The third problem, of course, I've already touched on a little bit, is the cost. It's just, it's expensive. And like most new technologies, you know, there's a big curve in the beginning and it starts to settle out over time. I don't see, I don't see anything on the horizon, Jonathan, where the price of these are going to start coming down. To put it in context, a diesel truck that you see driving down the road today is between 90 and $140,000, depending if it's a sleeper cab or not. Our trucks tend to be about $135,000. The truck that you're looking at here is about 350. So that's a significant difference. And so it's one thing to really want to have a carbon-neutral delivery vehicle, and it's another thing to actually write the check for that. John, was there anything else you wanted me to cover about it briefly? I think I've lost track of time.
You are good on time, Matt. No, this is good. Anything, you've got about seven minutes left. Anything else you want to talk about experience? And then we do have the other two slides that have some statistics on the vehicles, but I mean, that
That's right, yeah.
Your points were great, but anything, tell us, we're all ears.
Sure, jump to the next slide for just a second. These are just some specifics about the truck. 82,000 pounds, I'm not going to read through all of this, but the truck uses about 2.4 kilowatts per mile. So you can do some simple math and kind of start working backwards into, you know, the kind of range that you can get. That's with the 80% state of charge. We have always been able to come back with about 20 to 30% of charge. We've never really, our driver never really had to struggle with range anxiety, but that's all about route planning. The charging stations really are the most problematic for this, and it would be interesting maybe to have maybe another discussion with some of the people on this call sometime to kind of get your thoughts on it. Because, you know, there's two ways to do charging at a new location. There's to put in a temporary solution, which is what we're doing today. Requires maybe 10-ish thousand dollars of investment and a portable charging station which sits outside the boiler. The other part is to build it from the ground up. It involves moving a lot of concrete, involves burying a lot of wires, involves planning for excess capacity as you expect fleets to, you know, electrification to increase over time. It involves expensive charging stations. You don't want to buy these things and put them in until you're ready to use them. The charging infrastructure itself is almost as much of an investment, is more of an investment than the trucks themselves. And so as a four-hire fleet, as opposed to a private fleet, this is the struggle that we're having with most of our customers right now. It's also why there's very few four-hire companies right now that have many of these trucks into play. I've gotten a couple of questions here. Rate structures are you seeing? What types of rate structures are you seeing that are benefiting charging your fleet? I'll be honest with you, Ben, we don't have enough use cases right now. What's interesting, I can't really share the name of this customer, but there is a customer here in Chattanooga who scope to emissions is zero through an expensive carbon credit purchase that they mentioned. If we were to put this electric truck into play at their operation, the carbon footprint for them, the scope to measurement of that is zero. But they have paid for that privilege and most of the time, the charging, the electricity involved with charging these trucks is owned by the customer and not by us. And so, you know, those are just things that as a four-hire fleet, we have to adjust into our rate structure. It's the first time we've ever had the customer pay for the power as opposed to us paying for the diesel. Let's see, any other questions here? It's, you know, just a few other anecdotal things. I mentioned the driver. You know, it's interesting in our business, driver fatigue and driver safety are two big components of what it takes to run a trucking company. And our first initial reports from the driver that their fatigue is lower, their attention is better. There's obviously a honeymoon kind of stage involved with this and an excitement factor. But our driver tells us that kind of gaming, the regenerative braking, obviously being a rock star every time he pulls in somewhere and he's operating a very different truck. The technology that's on the truck, the noise reduction, the safety components, these are all things that make the driver experience better. Their satisfaction, as you can see here at the bottom of this slide, new level of the cab design around their needs is unparalleled to anything else that we've seen. And of course, this is with Nicola, which is a company that was able to start from the ground up. I'll say one last thing about that and then maybe Jonathan, if there's any questions. Nicola decided to invite four or five of our drivers to come out and work with their engineering team to design the layout of the cab, to test out different seats, to test out the position of the steering wheel, to test out the visibility of the devices and the screen, the angle of the screen. Because they were working literally with a raw lump of clay, they tried out four or five different ideas. They came back and invited the drivers back for a second visit to test out the ideas that they built into the truck. So this is really a driver-centric truck. It was designed from the ground up with the driver's needs. And I know that this is about electrification, but I think that that's just part of what we hope is going to make this a successful adoption.
That's great, Matt. Just a couple of related things. One, to help those that don't understand how, a lot of how Class A, you know, over-the-road trucking works in the US. First of all, note that all this money that's coming out for electric school buses, average electric school buses, it's not that far away from the numbers that Matt just mentioned for a truck like this. You know, 90 to $140,000 is probably what you're going to see for a school bus, especially if they might have air conditioning, seat belts, you know, you might get into that higher-end range. You could typically see a school bus for 110,000. Electric school buses are $350,000 to $400,000. How many school districts that aren't in California are going to be able to afford those? It wouldn't happen. Well, this money's coming out, so it's helping them kind of move forward. If something like that came out for Class A trucking, now there might be an opportunity. However, school buses are usually kept for like 15 to 20 years. So they have, if EPA wants them to get rid of the old stuff, that's great. When you talk about trucks like this, Class A fleets, that goes through these, these trucks go so far and get used so fast. They only have things that are four or five years old, maybe, so they don't meet some of those requirements. So there almost needs to be another form of how we can get trucking companies opportunities, even if it's just shorter routes or daycap stuff and not long-term sleeper cab stuff, how we can get them an opportunity to adopt these and have 10 on a route that goes Chattanooga to Atlanta and back or Nashville, wherever it may go. But what Matt's talking about are, you know, real-world limitations. When somebody has to write the check and it's that big, it's hard to do without some support.
Jonathan, let me throw one more thing in real quick. I am very much a capitalist and and have some pretty strong feelings about government regulation, but I can tell you this, as somebody who's studied innovation for as long as I have, some of the greatest innovations, disruptions in our country's history have been propped up through government investment. And I believe that, you know, incentives, packages, programs, there's a lot of this that's going to be a big, it's going to be a big part of how this gets off the ground.
Absolutely. But one other thing I'll mention is there is a DOE Funding Opportunity Announcement out that includes a planning funding, which I believe has a low-cost share, it might even be 0% cost share for heavy-duty and medium-duty truck charging along routes in the US. And Drew Fry, if you're still with us, when I was looking through that, I thought that would, I think some utilities with the right trucking company partners would probably could create a really solid proposal if you wanted to work on looking at the specifics for a company like Covenant and 10 others and figure out where do we go, what would our needs be? If we were going to pick routes, which ones would it be that maybe aren't the furthest ones that are shorter ones? How would we do that planning? How could we incorporate the megawatt charging standard, things like that? So I'm ringing your bell there, Drew, for a possibility of a proposal because I just think it sounds like a great opportunity, unless you've got somebody else that can bring fleets like Covenant in to have such a proposal. So Matt, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think with me adding into your presentation, we went over just a little bit, but I think we will move on now to projects that we have going on. And Daniel, you have the floor for Empower.
Thanks, Jonathan. Yes, our Empower Workplace Charging Project, we are one of the main entities running this national program along with Columbia Lament Clean Cities and the Center for Sustainable Energy. This is a workplace charging-focused project that endeavors to assist workplaces in or benefiting underserved communities across the United States with the installation of workplace charging. There's 30 states involved across the country and many clean cities coalitions in those states are involved as well. For Tennessee in particular, the goal is to help 24 workplaces across Tennessee install workplace charging by 2025. That is part of the national goal of seeing 600 workplaces installing workplace charging across the USA by the end of 2025. Right now, we're in the planning things. We are creating materials. We are creating our outreach plans and our plans for dissemination of information and all that stuff. That's going to end at the end of this year, when our implementation phase begins. We're going to be having an in-person project meeting for all major project personnel in Tacoma, Washington, at the GCSE event in August. And I wanted to point out that Empower is working with the Justice 40 Guidelines that have been provided by the federal government. We feel that, given the historic amounts of investment into communities to help electrify and helping electrify corridors, as well as the communities that are in and around those corridors, we need to be focusing on the communities that aren't going to be able to easily or readily electrify themselves. Historically, sustainable transportation programs have not been able to affect the most underserved communities in our country. And this is an opportunity for us to be able to get workplace charging in places who may be able to truly reap the economic, environmental, and health benefits of workplace charging. We are so excited to be able to do this work and excited to be able to bring you updates in the implementation phase of the next DET Town Hall and tell you how we've been doing as we start working with workplaces across Tennessee.
Thank you, Daniel. Up next, I will be very quick here. So DriveElectricUSA.org is the website if you want to learn more about the Drive Electric USA project. But basically, there's 14 states in that map that have solid borders and all of those states are part of the original work that's going on. The other colored states that you see are ones we are going to hope to start working with with new funding in the near future. But the Drive Electric USA project had seven priority areas that are creating a statewide branded program, working on dealerships, working on fleets, community and corridor charging planning. It got into engaging utilities, local power companies. So it was trying to figure out, how do we come up with kind of a base load of barrier-attacking opportunities and initiatives that we can do in those states? So if you go to DriveElectricUSA.org, you can learn more about the project, but we're just super thrilled to be a part of this. And probably even more happy that we have such great participation in Tennessee from all kinds of entities to try to work on the barriers we have here. Next slide. All right, Alexa, the floor is yours on Fast Charge TN.
All right. So yeah, so the Fast Charge TN Network, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, this was an initiative that kind of sprouted out of the statewide electric vehicle charging infrastructure needs assessment that Drive Electric Tennessee did back in 2019. Out of that, there was a partnership that was derived between Tennessee Valley Authority and TDEC, where we decided to kind of collaborate and co-fund the development of this statewide fast charging network on select primary and secondary roadways that are featured on the screen that you can see. And so the goal was to try and install fast chargers every 50 miles along these corridors. TVA is bringing funding to the table and then TDEC was leveraging its Volkswagen Settlement Environmental Mitigation Trust funds, about 5.2 million in VW funding to go towards these projects. This project, and we did have to kind of hit pause for a moment once the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program standards came out because we had to kind of decide whether we wanted to revise our minimum technical specs for the Fast Charge TN Network to comply with the NEVI or National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program that's going to be funded by the federal government under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. Essentially, what we decided was to not change the rules midway through the program, but to rather encourage folks to pursue some of the higher technical specs of that federal program and are providing a higher funding cap for those who do pursue those. And so we're moving forward now. We're very close to being able to make a public announcement on the selected local power companies that will be receiving funds to move forward with projects. We're just waiting on approval of the governor's quote in the press release. And so as soon as that comes through, we'll be pushing out a press release and so folks will be able to see kind of where the sites will be moving forward. In totality, between TDEC and TVA, we're looking at about 40 sites throughout the state that we're trying to develop through this. And so this will be a great kind of complement to the stations that will be funded by NEVI in future years with that funding that's coming from the US Department of Transportation. So this will kind of be a phase one, if you will. And then NEVI will come in and fill remaining gaps on the Old Field Corridors designated by the Federal Highway Administration. So that's the quick update on that and happy to answer questions later if there are any.
Thank you, Alexa. Savannah?
I will be brief. So and just to echo and continue with what Alexa had mentioned, the information that she was providing with that program is listed under our resources tab on DriveElectricTN.org. So if you would like to read more about that, please, please check that out. But I am here to talk about EPA Clean School Bus Program. So just a heads up, there is an upcoming webinar. If you would like to learn more about the program, that TN BEAT, so this is Bus Electrification Education and Bus Electrification Education and Planning is hosting. So TN BEAT is comprised of TVA, Drive Electric Tennessee, WRI's Electric School Bus Initiative Team, the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, and then Midwest and East Tennessee Clean Fields Coalition. So together, we have, you'll see the map that's on the slide here. We did back in the fall, we did a survey amongst all the county and city school districts to see, just to gauge like what their level of interest was in electric school buses because we knew that this funding through the EPA Clean School Bus Program was coming available. So you'll see on the map So you'll see on the map, um, there's different color coding for their various levels of interest. So with the um, with the the darker colors being um, that they're very interested and intended to apply, and then all the way down to the bottom where, you know, they're, they didn't respond or they didn't show any interest. One thing I would like to highlight on the map specifically outside of the colors is the symbols. So you'll see there's a star and then a dash. Um, so those are delineating um, the counties and the cities or special districts that are across the state um, that are designated as priority areas by the um, by the EPA. And um, you know, you may be asking, well, how does a county get prioritized? Um, there's several different categories that they can fall under um, in order to be prioritized, um, including a high need, a local education, um, education agency. Um, if they are considered a tribal school, which we do not have any in Tennessee, but EPA does recognize those and they will be prioritizing those applicants. Um, if it is a rural school, um, so again, those stars and those dashes, um, a lot of those are some of our rural schools in the state, um, they would be prioritized. Uh, low income areas are also, um, and then applicants that provide cost share through public private partnerships, um, grants and other entities are also able to apply for this grant. Um, and they would be prioritized by the EPA. Um, couple of other um, highlights. So the EPA, they um, they have a couple of different ways that they're going to be awarding the funding. Um, and that can be either through a grant, a rebate, or um, through contracts.
Sorry to interrupt. That was Tom.
You're good. Um, again, I feel like I could speak about this forever. So if you have any questions, um, or if you'd like to learn more about T N BEEP's initiatives, I will put the link in the chat.
Thank you, Savannah. All right, uh, pleased to have Dr. Mingzhu Jin join us to talk a little bit more about some research that they did on workplace charging. So, uh, Dr. Jin, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. So yeah, so uh, basically, I'm directing the Institute of our uh, Secure and Systemal Environment here. Uh, so first off, okay, Jonathan, Savannah, and also Daniel, you have earned a wonderful job. At uh, Land Grant University, we are here to fully support, okay, uh, your effort to um, promote electrical vehicles uh, in the state of Tennessee. Um, so we have already done that project for TVA. Uh, we mainly work on the workplace charging. Uh, so it's about the infrastructure, it's about okay promotion, but there are also, we need to worry about the impact on the grade. Uh, next slide. So uh, basically, we look at, okay, people's uh, kind of commuting patterns and calculating, okay, um, how far they are, how, where they are going. So uh, we use the data and integrated them to estimate uh, the charging needs, right, uh, at a workplace. Um, if, okay, people charge their vehicles, um, yeah, during the daytime. Next. So we kind of okay build our GI assistance, a dynamic system to show the uh, spatial temporal kind of okay variability of electric uh, demand for workplace charging. We do see that, okay, uh, there's, will be some huge UK burden on grades, especially in the downtown area because people arrive at almost the same time, uh, perhaps, okay, at eight o'clock. If everybody, okay, um, start to charge it, uh, their uh, electrical vehicles, then, okay, the grade cannot handle it so well. Also, it depends on on the charge, charge levels and if it's slow charging, it's perhaps okay. But if we're talking about, okay, fa- fast charging, um, then the whole system will basically break down. So based on our calculation, just for Nashville and Knoxville, uh, no, in the worst case, okay, the workplace charging will uh, use almost eleven percent of electricity that yes generated in the state. So there must be some way, okay, to um, at least, okay, make a demand. Even when uh, over the day and or maybe we should use some smarter uh, charging technologies. So here, okay, yeah, as a, yeah, as a university, we are doing all kinds of research uh, tools, support, okay, uh, they say. Okay, that's it, Jonathan.
Thank you. Um, hopefully that was helpful to TVA. And we got a, people talk about future proofing and uh, needing to make sure we have charging for EVs that are coming. So it's interesting, all the work that we have to do to figure out uh, how we're going to be able to handle charging in the future and hopefully have more sources of of cleaner power to do it. Uh, thanks again. And so Chin Fei is going to talk a little bit about current, some of the work she's doing in research areas, uh, she's working on. The floor is yours, Chin Fei.
Chin Fei, I believe you're muted.
Sorry. Okay, I'm Jim Beichen from Current Engineering Research Center at UT and my main task about uh, promoting electric vehicle from social behavior and energy justice perspective. I focus on community engagement and uh, trying to bring academic and research uh, academic and nonprofit organization, community engagement altogether uh, to promote energy efficiency and EV. Next slide, please. So this is a, a kind of overview of the EV and energy. I believe there's a connection between uh, EV solar reduction and even environmental health. And so this is kind of overall my research area. So I think um, I'm coming from more interdisciplinary and holistic approach to uh, take uh, uh, analyze uh, EV adoptions and other technology issues. And I specifically focus on concentrated disadvantaged group, for example, minority women, low income renters. If you are renters and although income, that puts you uh, into less uh, more disadvantaged groups. And also I emphasize uh, those uh, group need electricity for their medical needs. So that's kind of my concentrated uh, research groups. Next slide, please. So uh, specific, uh, I mentioned about community engagement and academic collaboration in promoting EV adoption and energy justice. I'm not going to present the results. I'm going to talk about my goal for this, all my research project. One is to bring the strong connection with local communities and to inform policy change. And secondly, uh, I would like to promote uh, more financial support to KIVA, our Nashville Electric Vehicle uh, EV Association. So I've written a, you know, proposal to EPA with um, Drive Electric Tennessee, KIVA and SEED uh, promote this uh, community engagement uh, plan for low to moderate income household uh, EV adoptions. Um, I also conduct research on public goods charging behaviors at workplace uh, in the process of analyzing the uh, data. Uh, my future research project, I'm developing two surveys about EV adoption in national survey looking at social psychological factors, uh, intensive sense of community, environmental factor, climate change perception, neighborhood, environmental concern and housing property uh, that is in a process developing. And another one specifically focused on Tennessee survey looking at charging station priority, energy burdens, five G uh, telecommunications, demand response of B two G. Uh, so that is a sort of my this month and next month's priority for developing uh, EV surveys, two surveys. Then uh, I have another project coming up, uh, developing is EV workplace workforce development for low income and to moderate income household. I'm going to stop here because we have limited time. Uh, feel free to contact me for any ideas or uh, discussion. Thank you.
That's great, Chin Fei. And it's funny, we uh, there's so much learning that at least I'll speak for myself, I need to do with regards to equity. And when Savannah and I were at the Fourth Roadmap Conference recently, we were hearing from a couple of different people that work in, in in this case, they were working in um, the multifamily housing uh, truck market and trying to figure out how can we help improve air quality, give them cleaner transportation options. And this, this fourth uh, mobility person that was running the project was working on three areas in California. And she gave us information about each one, but she said one thing that was surprising to learn is that one of the smaller ones, I think they had a hundred, maybe it was a hundred, a hundred twenty residents in this particular building. And they thought to ask, how many of you all have a driver's license? And they ended up with an answer that was pretty close to fifty percent. And so for me, you know, part of the thinking and what we want to talk about is how can we put level two at multifamily homes? So if people can get a new or used EV, how can they charge it there? Well, if they don't even have a driver's license and fifty percent of them don't, it just, there's a lot of learning we have to do. And I think one of the things that's, that's probably rung the loudest for me, and I know some other staff that work with me, Daniel Six A, Madeline Collins and others are recognizing that before we go try to hypothesize and think up these solutions, we need to work with and talk to people in these communities. So I'm very happy. I think you guys may have seen SEED, S E E D. That's just a group out of Knoxville that works on um, socially equitable um, development. So there, there's a lot of learning to to go on and I I'm probably first in line for needing to be in class.
Yes, we we definitely, this is a complex issues and uh, I, the only thing I want to say is there are many different type of low income household. So it's not just one kind. So, so that bringing the complexity of the this issue. So I, I think we need to target different kind of uh, customer, we call it customer segmentation. And that also reply to low income household. There are some low income household um, can afford something. Or I should say low to moderate income. So we can definitely talk more, uh, but uh, this is something we should bring the community awareness uh, to work on this special issue. Thank you.
We, we spend so much time, at least in our work for East Tennessee Clean Fuels, talking about vehicles and fleets. Because there's a lot of work that goes on in different groups across the state that's focusing on better utilization of mass transit, making mass transit cleaner. How do we use bike share? How do we use, create bike lanes? There's all this other stuff. And when you get into multifamily homes, it feels like all that stuff needs to come back in. You can't go in with the, a four wheeled vehicle solution. You may need to have four or five different opportunities that come in there. Obviously, electrifying mass transit is one of the ways uh, that takes place, but um, great. Thank you, Chin Fei. So Ainsley and Savannah, do we have any questions from chat? Or does anybody have a question, want to raise your hand to pose a question?
Um, unfortunately, we are out of time, so I don't want to hold anybody over. We've already had several people leave, so it may be best to just wrap it up. And if anyone has any questions, um, you're always welcome to reach out to us at info@DriveElectricTennessee.org with any of your questions.
Well, before people jump off, if anybody does have one, go ahead, feel free to speak up. I can stay on for a minute. We can see if you give you some directional advice. But yeah, we appreciate everybody joining us today and um, we can stick around just a little bit if anybody has a question. But thanks much to all our presenters. Certainly, thank you to uh, everybody in Drive Electric Tennessee from the Executive Committee to the Working Group members for all the assistance and and thoughtfulness and effort they put into making this a successful group.
Jonathan, if you have time, I'd like to check for one thing.
Sure.
Um, so I'm developing this uh, surveys. I would like to know, what do you think? I, I know there are so many, we can uh, go about this. Uh, in terms of what, what would you like to know the most? What is the critical, critical issues now? You think I can put it on my survey, all you want to know?
Who, who's the audience for the survey?
I think the just uh, gen, uh, two, two groups. One is uh, people who are adopt the survey, uh, adopt EV and people who haven't adopted EV. So in a sort of, we're divided into two groups, uh, two questions. Kind of one is charging station related, obviously, because people who are adopters are mostly concerned about EVs, uh, charging stations. And then, of course, the people who are not adopter also concerned about charging stations. So, so I kind of, uh, it's a two groups. One is uh, Tennessee, one is national representative, uh, sample. So that we can start with Tennessee specific.
Well, I, I think if if um, if you can send us an email that lays out some of that, it'll be easier for me to think about that instead of kind of on, on the fly. Um, but uh, and and then obviously, there may be multiple staffs that send it to, uh, I, I don't know if you know this, but if you send an email to ALL, A L L at ET Cleanfuels.org, that kind of will go to all of our staff. So
Okay.
Just, just that, even though there's fifteen people still on. Um, but uh, and then we can give you some feedback. I also think that if you wanted to use the Drive Electric Tennessee Facebook group with, I think, um, Ainsley may know better than I, but I, I think we have like two thousand followers now. As long as we can real succinctly ask the question, what kind of things do we need to know? Um, or what kind of things do you think would be an important question for these kind of audiences? Then we can, we can see if they give you any other helpful ideas.
Oh, that is a great suggestion. Okay. Yeah, um, okay, I'll put that in my agenda.
Okay, everybody, if we don't have any other questions, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.